...of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Morning, all.
Morning.
Call a meeting to order. And don't have any additions or... We have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second.
In second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Minutes from the second.
I read. Janice, approve?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in the second to approve the second. Meeting from the second. Uh, minutes, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Do you have the claims?
General public. Oh, claims.
Claim is next.
Okay. I got, uh, two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and one and twenty-six cents. Two, six, three, five, oh, one, point twenty-six. And the drainage is twenty-eight thousand four zero seven fifty, four, twenty-eight, four, oh, seven, fifty.
That's what I wrote down. Is there a second?
Second, that.
Motion in the second for the claims is presented. Any other discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. They are approved. Now, we have general public concern. We're gonna dump this in the other room quick. Dwayne, are you? I'm gonna grab it in quick.
That'd be a good idea.
Alright. Go ahead, Dwayne.
I want to pay my taxes before they repassed it. And I had all kinds of receipts here. I come up with one, all I owe together, all together, that. And they told me to tell them I wrote the check out. And then, all of a sudden, the other day around, I got a past due thing. This notice that has past due on my accounts. And I come up and paid it, then I got all mad because I got tons of interest charges. I shouldn't have, but their fault they had it wrong. My opinion.
So usually you bring in the stuff with these?
I did that last time I come through, yes.
So I don't, aren't the March ones pulled off? You'd usually come in with a check already made out?
Yeah, because my health's not very good right now, ma'am.
Yeah, um...
The last time I called, because I was in the basically in the nursing care center, that's what I did, yeah. I come up and paid the balance of them. And they told me the balance was whatever it was, I paid it. And then, all of a sudden, I got this past due notice. The same day I paid it. Then I got some interest and but financial charges by the office. I don't think they're at all.
So are all the, are all the ones that you owed, were they all in there when you brought them up?
Yes, they were. There's, there's Dwayne's over here. That taxes. There's Northridge. There's... Reading Family Farms and his other properties. All in there, you wanna look at them?
I don't know.
My name is just undifferent phase, all of my all time ones. I have lost thirty thousand or eighty thousand taxes. I take the last portion. I thought on time, but it wasn't. Couldn't have missed them. They ended up wrong, to tell you the truth, my opinion.
So like question, Dwayne, why aren't these stubs removed from your...
I cut, you didn't take them off. I was up in the office.
We always take them off.
About this time.
Are they, you paid both, you paid the entire year?
No, I just paid...
Or this is the back half?
This is what I paid, this is what I paid earlier, okay? This is one of the, this is Grant's property, that's paid, that wasn't paid. This Northridge hasn't paid. The last past due ones. This one here wasn't due. It's mixed up, okay?
Right. We paid the checks that you brought in for your, for two properties and then the one, you only missed one property.
Is, is that the deal, one of the properties?
One of the entities got, yeah.
One of the properties got missed.
Humboldt Northridge.
He didn't have a...
Didn't have a receipt for it or a stub?
He's got it.
I got both the, both the properties, your two and Dwayne's other two. I was, they're all paid, to tell you the truth. Hundred percent paid. So I got that notice in the mail. I was so mad, still mad about it.
Well... Unfortunately, Dwayne, it, that's also happened to me before. Where I bought a property in town here. And I thought it was one lot, but it actually had ten feet from another lot on it. And I missed that ten feet. And I got a penalty because I never paid for that ten feet of the other lot, just because I missed it. And had to pay the interest and penalties and I got my name in the paper.
I come and ask them what the total was, on everything, you know. The ladies are friendly about it too, very friendly.
The thing that we run into, Dwayne, we don't know the names of all your properties. We look up your personal name.
I told Northridge, Humboldt Northridge. I was worried about Reading Family Farms, this is that one, the most important one. Other properties, I don't say. Still, I tell his paper.
I just don't see how it happened. If you came in March and told us all those entities, we would've looked them all up. Or you brought in your stuff, we would've looked it all up.
But you didn't, apparently you did. I missed, I have back taxes behind.
The notices go out by law to make sure people haven't forgotten something and that they don't get published in the paper and they don't get sold at tax sale. So that's a courtesy that the law has us do for tax property owners.
When you say the notices go out?
The dilinquent notices in May.
That's what I got in the mail that went after you. I come right, right away, come up here. I was so mad.
From November till the fall and in May for the spring.
Well, usually I got in the mail. Past due to Ingrid's taxes. That I gave them, paid that, that was an interest. Then I, after I filed out, I interest on it too and penalty.
Oh, yeah, penalties and...
After I worry about the interest, the penalty charges. I don't think it's fair at all.
So do you have a check that showed you paid the Humboldt Northridge? You have a stub or anything that you can show that...
You've got receipt right there.
Nor that, that you paid it in March, though.
What's past due there? Still don't have it paid, I don't know if it's been paid, to tell you the truth. I got one, two, three, four.
But if you have your, you have your check that shows you paid something in March for Humboldt Northridge?
I have a check only. The county, not the north. As far as county, I don't write Northridge.
Right, but on your Northridge account?
I have a Northridge account. How did that...
Out of your account, total?
My account, Dwayne's own account.
Yes, do you have a check from that business or whatever you use to pay Northridge for March? Do you have something that shows you paid it in March?
Got receipt right there.
This shows you paid it in May.
How, how many do I got past due there on Northridge?
I don't know.
Pete, you got? I got...
Thirteen parcels.
I got one. One, two.
Well, I think we should sit down with Jan and look through this and...
Come up.
Come up with an answer for you next week, Dwayne.
I wouldn't argue that.
Because we can't do it right now.
No.
For us to sit here, we're gonna end up behind on everything that we have.
Right.
Can we do that, Dwayne?
Yes, I, you can keep all the stuff you want.
No. I'd rather you keep it and we'll sit, set up at a time that we can put this together. And if you get your cancelled check, is that what you have?
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yeah, perhaps, I'll find them.
Well, you'll find it.
My records are terrible, okay? They're shoebox messed, more than shoebox.
But don't give away all your secrets.
Well, they are. I had a apartment with a Palmer turn for a while.
I know.
It was a mess.
Hang in there, we're willing to work with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
To me.
You're right, we're on. Oh, mercy. Okay. I hope you're gonna be...
I don't know. I apologize, I always come here and I, I put a tree in front of you. It's our cheat now, right?
Right.
As long as it ain't a two by four.
You're part of the reason my case is full. This is what I'm talking about.
Just think, just think how much you're worth now.
Yeah. And pretty clip.
I'm here today for, uh, reporting on, uh, the Board of Adjustments hearing on decision for our special exception use for Mitch Pedolfson. I have documents here. I made one, the, the front document is the main one you need to look at for right now. The other ones, uh, you really need to look at, um, so that you have an idea of what we actually went through. Um, I'd, I'd like to commend the Board of Adjustments, they've been fantastic. Uh, the amount of time spent on this has been just tremendous and, uh, they, they did everything they could to make sure that they got all the information necessary to make decision. And, uh, and, uh, so I just wanna commend them for that. And also those people that came to, uh, the hearings. Uh, the last hearing we had, uh, with the decision, uh, the Board of Adjustments, uh, requested that I contact those people that were at the, uh, last hearing and, uh, ask them if they, if they would like to, uh, come to this, uh, this meeting so that they could see, uh, how this is reported. And we have Megan Hart and Brad Hart here and they were, uh, at their, at our last hearing. The documents that I have there, uh, are basically the minutes and also a site visit that we did. I, I write the top sheet here, I wrote you a, uh, timeline of, uh, how this has all occurred. You can take a look at that. Uh, this started, uh, basically the fifteenth of March. Uh, as far as the hearings are concerned, it was November of last year that, uh, it was brought to my attention about, uh, campground at that property and that's when I started the, uh, process of looking at that. And so, uh, it's, it's taken a little while here. Um, and you can see the things that occurred. Uh, we had, I, I made contact, I did a site visit, uh, I had communication, uh, with the owner for a special exception use then, it was determined it needed, was needed. Uh, I had a public hearing notice. We had a public hearing on the seventh of April. Uh, at that point in time, uh, it was determined there was not enough information to, to make a decision. And so, uh, the Board of Adjustments requested a site visit with the owner, which we did on the nineteenth. Uh, public hearing, uh, notice was put in the papers required. And then, uh, on the second of May, we had the second public hearing. Uh, this was a ruling, uh, I have the, the address there. And the permit was denied on a vote of three to deny and one abstain. And, um, you can see there on the basic decision, uh, there was acquired information from, from those things listed. The permit information maps were provided, both by the owner and also members of the Board of Adjustment. We had aerial views and photos, site visits, uh, owner explanation of the purpose, the use and operation of the campsite and property. And then information concerning questions, uh, and concerns and questions provided by adjacent, uh, or nearby landowners and citizens. The very first meeting we had or hearing we had, we had five, uh, individuals that, uh, presented concerns. And, uh, the owner was not, uh, present at the first meeting. Uh, the ordinances that I have listed there, and I have copies of that if you need to go back through those again, but the, uh, ordinances, uh, it's twenty-six, the articles thirteen, fourteen, seventeen and eighteen are the articles that we followed. Um, the deliberation and procedural requirements and vote, information was reviewed by the Board of Adjustments. The application approved, uh, approval requirements and stipulations were considered. And no, no approval, no approved permits before the construction began, uh, which the construction has begun there. More information needed then to determine the waste management and well location, violations and penalties placed on ho- on hold pending the permit information and application approval. So basically, there's two parts of this. We know for fact that the property has, uh, construction started on a campground. And so that in itself is a violation of not having permit prior to, to the start. And so, uh, that in itself can be subject to, uh, penalties, violations of penalties according to the ordinance. And so that's, even though they're related, that's one item. The second item is the fact that, uh, according to the ordinance, the A-two agricultural district zoning of that property does not have a principal use for campgrounds, but it does fall under the special exception use for that zoned, zoned area. And so that's where the special exception use, uh, application came into play. And, uh, that is, of course, related, but it's actually a separate item as far as what has to be dealt with. In this case, there's two things that are true and, uh, so, uh, that's where the special exception use process took place. In the ordinance, the, on the second page there, the ordinance has a stipulation, uh, first of all, for the Board of Adjustments to look at the, the information that was provided from all entities and then to deliberate on that and look at where there are things that were, would be capable by the, for the board to put stipulations in for approval. And it's very broad. They could, they could do a lot of different things, uh, for approval. Would, would, they're, they're basically, their jurisdiction there was not very limited. And so, uh, they looked at that very carefully. Uh, they deliberated after the second hearing for almost an hour and fifteen minutes in looking at this very carefully. But at the end of the day, those things that I have listed there, under section four standards of article fourteen, those things are very clear that the Board of Adjustments cannot approve of the application if any of these items are found and they cannot be basically adjusted. There's fourteen items there, there's a lot of things listed underneath each of those fourteen items. Uh, and you'll see, uh, one of the documents that I have there is the, the minutes of the second hearing. And I asked specifically for those people in attendance who had given information to look at and put the information that they brought in accordance with what these, uh, requirements are, these standards. And so, uh, they were given the opportunity to clarify them according to these, so it's a comparison. Their, their concerns or complaints or considerations, I asked them to fit them to these. And you'll see on the minutes that some of those were listed. And so, at the end of the day, the Board of Adjustments decided that items four-one, four-two and four-three did not allow then the permit to be approved. And, and, uh, there were some others listed by the attendees as far as what their concerns were. But the Board of Adjustments, again, at the end of the day, said they could not approve because of those three. Um, then, uh, if you look on the third page, I went through the appeals process. Uh, and there's just a couple of things that I've highlighted there. The appeals process basically provides for any individual, it wouldn't have to be property owners, it could be anyone, uh, citizens of the county, to be able to appeal the decision. You can read through all of that, but the first part that I highlighted there, such appeals should be taken within a reasonable time, not to exceed thirty days, by filing with the administrator and the Board of Adjustments, a notice of appeal specifically grounds thereof. So in other words, if, if anyone has an appeal, that directly comes to me, according to the ordinance, I have to get that directly to the Board of Adjustments. Uh, and then, uh, they have the requirement to, after the thirty days, to set up a public hearing on that appeal.
Then they would re-review?
Far as the way the ordinance says, yes.
Given an opportunity for more information to come forth.
No, it doesn't make, it does not say, as far as I can tell, exactly how that takes place. And I, I really would need to, and I will, talk to the county attorney to make sure we have that, uh, you know. It doesn't really say how you do an appeals hearing. It just says you will have one. And so, uh, it says there, the Board of Adjustments will fix a reasonable time for the hearing of appeals and give public notice, uh, thereof, as well as do notice to the parties in interest and decide the same within a reasonable time. And so, again, as I done according to the ordinance for the other hearings, public notice, I contacted people that were, that lived adjacent to within two hundred feet of this property. I did that twice for ea- I did one for each hearing. So, all of that was taken care of. Uh, there were four, actually four properties that are adjacent to within two hundred feet. And basically, the ordinance says if it's feasible to contact them. Now, but I did. So, so everybody understands that. And it's not highlighted very well. And, and I'm not exactly sure how this is taken care of. The last sentence there on that, it says a fee to be determined by the, by resolution of the Board of Supervisors shall be paid to the administrative officer at the time of notices filed. That's all it says. It doesn't say who pays it. It doesn't say where it comes from, but that's the actual written, uh, statement from the ordinance. Uh, I wish that was a little more clear and that probably can be, uh, discussed. I will tell you that, uh, if you look at the, the fourth page, you can read that, basically the appeal then, uh, stays everything. And the Board of Adjustments voted, it says, a reasonable time up to thirty days. The Board of Adjustments, uh, voted to allow the full thirty days for appeals to come in. And, uh, because of, obviously with appeals processes, that takes time for put, people to put things together and, uh, you know, what, whatever it takes for them to get ready for that. And so they, they set a full thirty days. I will tell you, we have received an appeal from the property owner, Mitch Pedolfson. And he just, uh, got it to me on Friday. My requirement is to get this to the Board of Adjustment members first, and which I will do. I'll send them, uh, attachment of that, uh, to an email. And then the Board of Adjustments will need to set up a meeting where then they will, uh, determine a date for a public hearing and that would take place then after the thirty days. So the, the appeal has already, uh, put into place the process that we, you know, we have to reconsider that, okay? Now, the last part on there, your, your authority, according to the ordinance of article fourteen, section three, item three-five. It says the Board of Supervisors may, after a decision of the Board of Adjustments is made, vote to deny the implementation of such decision for a period of thirty days. The council may not overturn a decision of the Board of Adjustments. During the thirty day period, the Board of Adjustments may or may not reconsider its decision. All operations on stay until the appeals and final ruling is made. So basically what that's saying is you as a Board of Supervisors can request of the Board of Adjustments that they, uh, revisit this. And you see there, the Board of Adjustments can say, yes, we will, or no, we won't.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, with all your explanation of this, they've already made the decision they're going to.
That's separate from what the appeal is.
Well, this is a separate, I mean, that was my question.
There can be an appeal, okay?
Right.
Which we already have one.
Right.
There could be more, okay? But you also, as a Board of Supervisors, can ask the Board of Adjustments to reconsider. So they're really two separate things.
There, it also says that...
I can see what you're saying. What you're saying, if there was no appeal, the board could appeal it even.
The board could ask.
You're not appealing, they're asking.
You're asking them to look at it.
So they're two separate things, but we wanna make sure we provide for both.
Okay.
So the Board of Adjustments knows are there appeals and if they are a decision by the Board of Supervisors asking them to reconsider. So there's two, two things.
It also says, um, may.
Yes.
So you could, may not vote too.
The Board of Adjustments has, uh, final say.
I know, they do.
And they can say, no, we won't reconsider, reconsider, or they'll say, we will reconsider.
Right.
Obviously, with the board, the appeals hearing, okay? There will be review of this.
Right.
But if you want your input as the Board of Supervisors to say, yes, we want you to reconsider this, then you can do that.
Oh, I see.
Okay? So it's an addition.
I, I, I don't think, well...
They're not separate.
It's the Board of Adjustment and they've already said there's an appeal, so we aren't gonna stand in the way of that.
But yours is not an appeal.
No. Ours is just saying, hey, we'd like you to take a second look.
Right. If there hadn't been, if there hadn't been an appeal, you would've done it. If there is an appeal, you can still ask it.
If it was an appeal, we could ask them, go over it a second time.
You're not really appealing it, you're providing for a decision that, yeah, we think you should reconsider this.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
It sounds the same, but in actuality, they are separate.
They are separate.
Okay?
Okay.
According to my...
I understand now.
According to my, uh, calculations, thirty days from the reporting, which is today, is June eighth. So we know that you have up to, uh, June eighth to ask the Board of Adjustments to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay?
Gotcha.
Makes sense?
Well, sort of. I would say, hey, they're already, they're, they're heads already in appeals process. I think the Board of Adjustment has done a very good job of their due diligence. You have as certainly updating all the information in the correct and logical timeline. I mean, I don't, this is just one person, but I don't, for one, wouldn't wanna get in the way of the Board of Adjustments workings because I think they've been correct to date, so.
But according to your...
I don't think that we want to throw a wrench into the workings of the Board of Adjustment.
I'll, I'll say two things on that. Uh, for the, uh, requirement of the ordinance, there has to be given the opportunity to the Board of Supervisors, regardless of appeals.
Right.
For you to say if you want one or not. Right. Now, what I'd ask you to do is look at these other documents. These are the minutes and information from the site visits.
Right.
So for you to make a, a decision whether or not you want them to reconsider, I really think you need to look at these documents.
Absolutely.
I try to take the minutes as, as accurately as possible. If you have questions, obviously, give me a call.
Yeah.
I'll be able to try to answer your questions. I've communicated with the, uh, the owner and also with, uh, with Megan on several things.
Has, has he got a copy of all this stuff also?
Yes. Except for the minutes of the last hearing because I did not have, uh, we did not have them published. They will be published this week. I have to give them to Kent and whoever else for those minutes.
Okay.
Okay? Those minutes, uh, have not been published yet and I did have approval by all the members of the Board of Adjustments... Those minutes have not been published yet, and I did have approval by all the members of the Board of Adjustments to present them to you here today. I had to do that by call, or text, or email, but I wanted to make sure that I had their, all of their approvals. And so, I mentioned too, Dave Lee is a member of that Board of Adjustments. And so, if I'm telling you something I shouldn't-
Oh, we did not.
You have a reference there as well, okay? If you don't have any questions on that, I have another item that I-
I'd also throw in that Dave Lee's been a member of that board for years. I mean, he's been, it isn't like he was just thrown in there in the last year as a filling.
Well, as I said, I must tell you, they, you know, the time of going to the site visit, the hearings that we have, the communications that I've had with them, I mean, from my viewpoint, it couldn't be better. That's why I said, when I say due diligence, that's that.
Yeah.
They definitely, and they were, they were extremely, you know, looking at it very, very carefully. They didn't just take it lightly, obviously.
Very engaged.
So, and I apologize for this late thing, but I want to give this to you. This is, I got on Friday from-
Another copy of it.
Galfer Midas. And this was the agreement, contract with Midas for our comprehensive plan. They asked that we, she said that we would not get the contract for the rewriting of the ordinance. Because the ordinance has to comply with the comprehensive plan, which this contract covers. So there's no sense doing the ordinance until this has been completed anyway. I wouldn't have you know it here, it tells you what the services they will provide. On the second page, it provides for what the contract was agreed upon, and that would call for, I think they said, five increment payments. And those would be provided to us as they go through those things that are listed, the various things that are listed. I would very much want you to review all of those things. I gave the, kind of the timeline to you at one point in time, but I think this is pretty important. And the only, the one thing I don't know is if it was discussed of where that money would come from. All I know is that it was approved, those contracts were approved. So, I'm not privy to that. I would say also, she asked that this was sent to me on an email. This was an attachment. I printed it off. It's not exactly the, an original. This is just what I printed off. She said if we want an original, you know, she'll send it in the mail. So I say, you could either accept us as the original, or request the original be sent to us, okay?
I guess I would say, they wouldn't be all right with us signing this, and she needs the original sign. We can sign this and send it there, and she can send the original back, and we can re-sign it.
I mean, realistically, this is nothing different than what we talked about previously.
No, but she, this is the actual contract.
Yeah, and then you, yeah, I don't see anything in here, and it's, let's see what it's-
And I got this on Friday.
Five increments, the total is the same as the original plan development. They kind of have a breakdown over months.
Right.
Like it takes a while, which we, you knew. So I don't see anything different.
There was only one thing different that I saw, was the fact that because they said in here, or she, in the email, they have a shortage of staff right now, and they're going to move this back to starting in August one.
I saw it.
Could be a little late, I always thought.
And I know, I told you last time, they're hopefully going to have a person start, but maybe that fell through. She also said, if they get staffing people there, we could start before August one. But that, this is actually the contract of starting August one. I was hoping we'd be-
They'd go in.
Right, yeah, that was, obviously.
The plan that they had supposed to be coming on, backed out.
That's the deal, right?
Still a short plan.
Well, you find out that, you go to hire somebody in these days, and they go back, give their boss a two weeks' notice, and their boss says, "I'll give you a lot more money if you stay," and people stay. That's what happens.
Well, I understood in this case, the individual was a new graduate from Iowa State.
Oh.
New graduate, and one that's got a better offer.
You never know, you know, maybe they're ten or-
No, this is fine. I mean, because we've already actually approved all of them.
Right, I just wanted, that's why I mentioned, it's really not an issue that they're-
Not a bad game.
Being pushed back, and the fact that it's not approved done.
They also indicated they're working on the maps, and I told you I've met with them, so they're working on the maps. And I'll hopefully hear back from them soon.
It's still moving forward, it's just like everything else, it's slower than you'd like.
Well, yeah, I guess so.
So what are your thoughts? Can I sign this and have to-
Yeah, go ahead, because we agreed to it a long time ago.
I was going to say-
I think it's a technical, I think the only technicality is that-
It's just like, they pushed it back, and it's not a third done, unfortunately.
And this is the actual contract-
Yes.
To be signed.
Like, it's, it's like a bolt.
And I guess if she needs the original sign, ever send it up, and we'll re-sign it and send it back.
That's not a problem.
Okay, I think that's, if you've got any other questions, I love it.
Pass on to your board, we thank them.
Yes.
Because it's, they have put in a lot of hours.
Yes.
And I don't think that anybody's doing anything out of spite, they're just-
Nope.
Doing what they're doing.
I think it's, like I said, it's due diligence, it's what they're there for. Randy's mentioned that they didn't just, eh, you know, they spent a lot of time, effort, looked, everything. You couldn't have a bad report than this, I think we're fully aware of.
Well, it was very important that we follow the ordinance.
Yep.
And all the information that was brought to that board, then correlated to those things, those standards that are listed.
Yep, and you certainly did that.
Being the ordinance, that's where they made the decision.
Yep, and, yep, there you go.
Well, your reports have been passed on to another county, because we showed them how you report back to us. And we said, "We're going to have, we'd like this style report." And they're like, "What?" So we're using you as an example.
No, they're going to be calling me and saying, "What are you doing?" We do them yourself.
I told them, that's, this is a report, we know everything that's going on.
But I was a teacher.
I know you were, I remember being in that class.
I don't remember that, Booth. Oh, yeah.
But don't talk to Ken about it.
Okay, okay.
Well, we thank you very much, and tell the board thank you.
You bet.
Okay, looks down, I'd like to bring down to somebody named Ben. Good morning.
Just got the one item on the agenda, to award the contracts for Project LC three zero one seven nine zero, Project LC three eight two seven four zero.
Looks like our totals were the same.
Total was two ninety, two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Eighty-eight dollars lower than the second low, the CCF. We've done work with Wyman in the past, they're good contractors. I have talked to the supplier, as far as pricing compared to previous years, which you can see to the right of the spreadsheet. And it's all a reflection of the cost of steel that's going into these box culverts, so.
So, when we bid it, they bid it this way, are those bid, as in today, that's set? If the steel went up by August through September?
Guaranteed lock.
Or guaranteed locked in at this rate?
And he's told me that the price is going up again in June.
I figured that.
Yeah, crazy.
They've already been notified that the steel that goes in those box culverts is going up again, so.
Probably steel and everything else.
They said they don't like doing mid-season increases, but with the supplies being the way that they are right now, they're having to adjust about every three months.
Yeah.
Where we've stayed relatively firm, and they've only adjusted pricing once a year, now it's quartered, so.
So if they're, I mean, right now, we are such a screwed up calendar for planting. This is a fall-type project, our fall could be later.
Fall could be December.
I know. Oh, I guess that was my question, are they still going to try early?
I mean, the entire calendar has shifted a month. We didn't get snow till January.
What's the start date on these?
Uh, the start date is mid-September and beginning of October. Mid-September for the one in the Drift.
That's late, that means you have to start, but that doesn't mean they can't start tomorrow after this is approved.
As soon as we're awarded this-
As soon as the contracts and bonds are approved, which will be probably two weeks from now.
They could start.
Then they can start. Where it'll come down to is supply of the material.
Right.
Yeah, as long as they get awarded, they'll get their bill lined up.
I anticipate Wyman starting sooner, when I talked to them before the letting, their calendar wasn't full.
Okay.
And the low water rumbles and the ditches helps. A lot of years got higher.
For your concern, hopefully, and with a slightly later fall, it would be done prior to that.
Before harvest year.
With any luck at all.
Well, you just know how it messes with farmers, and you tell them that this road's going to be closed for two weeks, and it's like, and I don't want to, we don't want to do anything that, but-
But these aren't really-
They're not high traffic.
They're not the main line going down there, so.
One is used to Bruce Bolt, I want to say that's a traffic count of forty.
It'll cause a couple farmers to go a few miles out of their way, possibly, if they're going to Littlemore.
If it's not completed by harvest.
Yeah. Well, all right.
Well, I would say, I think we're good. I would make the motion to award the projects listed to Wyman Incorporated for the two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars.
I will second Eric's motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to award the, I'm not going to go through the numbers, but to Wyman eight for two ninety, one forty-three even. Start date of September.
Mid-September.
Mid-September, could possibly be earlier, but, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carries.
Beyond that, I got a text message from Blacktop Services this morning. Their plan is to start over on Lake Church Road, late this afternoon. They'll be here in the county all this week, starting crack filling. I did receive a phone call from Bruce with Murphy Tractor on Friday. They're asking if they can borrow a couple of bridge beams to jack up Blacktop Services' paving machine to be able to work on the underside. I told him, I talked to Bruce Friday afternoon, and Bruce and I decided that we'd bring it to the board to discuss today before we gave them the okay. To begin with, they're wanting to buy the beams, but to purchase the beams, usually it goes to an auction, where everybody has a chance to bid on them. And I guess when I left it with Bruce over Friday afternoon, was, we'd probably be more open to basically renting them to them, or loaning them to them.
Yeah.
Rather than selling, but.
Are these steel I-beams?
No, these would be-
Wooden beams.
Wooden bridge beams that we've got sitting in the Dakota City.
Like the ten by twenty or whatever.
Yeah, most of these are like eight inches thick and-
Sixteen inches.
Sixteen inches tall, and they're about twenty-five foot long.
I'm guessing, so they can put up multiple jacks underneath one of those things to try to lift it, to support it, to whatever they're repairing on it.
What I'm figuring is, yeah, they're going to want to drive the machine up onto, maybe two of these stacks, to be able to, have somebody slide under it with a crawler to work on it.
If we rent them to them, that takes liability off the county, right?
Yes.
That's what my question-
If we loan them to them, the county's still got the responsibility.
Yeah.
So.
We'll do a rental agreement.
Yeah, that's what I'd recommend, so you don't have any liability if something does happen when they're doing this. You know how they bring the county into everything.
Yeah, that's for good, but, yeah, cover around that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
It's fine, man?
Uh, yeah, we've got some-
Potential?
We've got something here.
All right.
Beyond that, guys are continuing to haul rock. The Hungle Shop is doing some intake and cross pipe repair. Because the weather's supposed to be so nice this week. It's supposed to get cold again next week, so they figured they'd jump back in the dump trucks and start pulling rock again.
How are the-
Well, I think cold will be a relative term by next week. It will not be ninety.
I think it's supposed to be colder.
It will not be ninety.
Right.
It might actually be average, but-
Yeah.
I don't say that, but like, it's all of a sudden, it's going to be thirty again, no.
How are the roads shaping up? Does it dry up pretty good?
They're drying up and firm up. Actually, they're looking nice where we've cut shoulders and old material around there, and really firm up.
Seems to be pretty solid, I think.
Because the people who live out near them, back to somewhat walking, not close to the earth, they're not thinking we've lost their mind.
Yeah, we, honestly, we haven't gotten any phone calls. I think everybody just understands, springtime, the roads are soft, and we're kind of trying to get the road to drain away.
Kind of reshaping the roads.
Yeah. Uh, and I guess to end on a good, positive note, we picked up the lint belt on Friday.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Awesome.
Cat finally showed up from Japan, and we got it installed here two weeks ago, and put it through its paces, and we drove down, built it up on Friday.
Awesome, good, wonderful work.
Yep.
When he told me that Friday, I made the recommendation that we have a little walk-around, and a little safety chat, and remind everybody-
So it doesn't happen again.
It's our new baby.
It's our brand new sixteen-year-old machine.
That's it.
Always nice to have one of those.
But at least the cat will be nice and clean.
Yeah.
It'll be clean.
Yeah.
How, did you find anything out yet at Sheldon Park Road yet, or what?
Uh, I met with Jen's out there probably a month ago, and his plan is to try and get out there this month, and run a tile down the middle of the road, and then we'll backfill that with P-Rock, give it time to settle. I talked to Blacktop Services, we're going to wait on the chip seal overlay until later in the year. So basically, I moved crack filling forward, and just slid back the contract that we've got for the double chip seal.
Okay.
So will they use the real, the tiling machine on the-
They use the thing with the chain.
They're going to use the chain-driven tiling machine.
Wow.
That they'll pull all of the material.
If they try to plow it in there, just destroy the road.
That's what I figured.
Well, what we're looking at doing is, we're trying to pull the material out of the trench, so we can backfill the rock.
So you don't set them.
What size tile will that be?
Uh, he's supposed to quote me both five and six inches.
Yeah, either one would be adequate, I'm sure.
Oh, I would think so.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ben.
Are you going to be around, because this doesn't have anything to do with anything, and it's not this board that I got to ask you a question for, so.
Yeah, I can stick around.
Okay, this shouldn't take too long. Otherwise, I'm going to forget. But it's not, and it's not an emergency.
Okay.
All right. Do we need to go into drainage for this DD one three, or what do you?
Unless we're going to set the date, no. Well, it looks like we are going to.
Set the date.
Then probably have to go into drainage.
My question is, do you want to do your reports quick?
Yeah.
And then we can just access the whole thing?
Yeah.
Can you do that, Sandy? You got any reports?
Um, no, I don't have one to bring up, and that name is Mental Health Awareness Month. So, just to make that aware, that's it.
Good. That's easy. Uh, go back to the second. Had the Board of Adjustment at courthouse here on Monday night. Randy gave you all the details on that. I also met with the gal over at Okahana's on the Sanitarium. Met with the Sanitarium also over there on Monday, that was at three in the afternoon, Okahana's. And for this, we're going to do it this month, see how you like it, and if it's good, we'll leave it alone, and do it the rest of the year that way.
Okay, good enough.
She said, "It's no big deal, it's not going to cost us any more, just to give us a good record of what they're doing." She said, "It's no big deal. It's not gonna cost us anymore just to give us a good, good report of what they're doing." Got it?
We can send Randy over for a week. Don't want to put a word together.
That was a real, real good visit. Very nice.
We hit it on him when he said he was a teacher, so that's why when you got your stuff.
They say they make you do it over and over till you get it right, you know?
Uh, it looks like all the official I had. I did have a call, uh, from a gal out in Beaver Township about the taxes on, or the interest on the drainage. She says, "If I had known I was gonna collect interest and still pay an interest, she would've paid the whole thing when it was due two years ago." She's been paying interest on it ever since. She said she didn't like that.
I think you can come in and pay it off even if you have it on a ten-year.
If you didn't have it on a ten-year, it hadn't been billed.
Well, then it's a possibility.
All the interest is piling up and she said-
We know.
Yeah.
I can- I can get rid of it. You know, I don't wanna pay it.
That's, you know. All right.
Uh, last Tuesday, the third, we had a Public Safety Commission meeting that morning. That was my one official meeting.
I also attended that Public Safety meeting on the third. And, uh, then I think it was later in that afternoon, I paid bills for the Iowa drainage.
Drainage? I had nothing. No extra. All right, Trish, do you have anything for us? How is mid- the cable business doing?
Awesome.
Good.
Working very well.
Good. Making a lot of headway there. Someone, was it you, said they got everything down with the?
Yeah, they said they've got all the cables pulled. Now they're just hooking them up in the offices and getting them installed into a rack. Then come- whenever they get all that done, then they'll turn everything over on the weekend the way it sounds.
Do you have any knowledge of getting rid of this old stuff?
They're gonna remove all the old after it's- everything's up and running.
Okay, so then after that and the concern of any electrical, box covers, whatever, we done at that time?
Yeah.
Because you said that-
I just asked them when they're crawling around in the attic and places that most people don't go. If they see anything they think doesn't look wired properly or whatever, to let us know and we get electricians to take care of it.
So when you would say, "Yes, when they're done, old cables pulled, all that, it sounds like they've found enough." And some of it, I don't think-
Minor, really minor.
But if there's a junction box without a cover, we do get the electrician to go up, take a look at that?
Yeah, and Arturo said if it's just a cover, he can put them.
Yeah, so if they don't see anything more egregious when they're all said and done, I'm sure he'd go up and do it.
Yeah.
Totally forget about it.
My wife's dad is an electrician. She's not scared of electricity, but I stand and look over his shoulder.
I would.
I've been bit too many times and my fingers touched too much area, so she says, "Well, don't do it." Yeah, you're right. I won't. All right, with that.
Motion to go into drainage.
We will move on to drainage. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're in drainage at nine twenty-five. About to put Kent to sleep, but we're in drainage.
Sorry. That's all right.
You're all right. I feel the same way.
Okay, so on window three, the publication of never went out for the engineering report and reclassification, so we will have to reschedule.
Reschedule that?
Yeah.
I just looked at that and saw that that was the day. So how far out do we have to do that to?
Forty days.
Yeah, I think it's forty and-
So.
Is it that long or is it at least twenty, no less than forty?
Forty days.
Or no more than?
No more than.
No less than twenty, no more than forty.
Is that right?
I'm not sure. I'm just asking. I don't think we-
I don't remember the date.
I don't think we have to push it off forty days.
No, no. I think the minimum, whatever.
I know it's minimum of twenty.
Right.
I think once the notices go out, you have to have twenty days-
It's a minimum of forty.
Notice and no more than forty.
And I think, what's the other get the notice about?
Well, you got time now after all that stuff.
Twenty-one days is gonna be May- Memorial Day, so we- I'm assuming we aren't having a meeting on Memorial Day, so you're gonna have to go the following week, which would be June-
Well.
Six.
Yep. I mean, but I wanna, as Rick stated, the notice is going out. I know you have to send them out for this office.
Anyways, never.
Yeah, that's big public.
So.
So if it goes in, will it get in the paper today?
No.
No, you get it to them by noon. They can get it in the Thursday paper.
Well, here's what I'm- I'm being in depth sympathetic to the auditor's office and sending these out. Then Trish mentioned, probably have them sent out this week. So that's what you're basing the time period on.
Should we move it back?
Does it make a difference if you still, uh, go under the premise of getting them sent out this week? They are sent out this week, the notification would be in the newspaper, uh, a week from this week then? Cause you would be able to say, "Yes, they were sent." The notice would go in next week, so where would that put it? Still probably June sixth if earliest.
Seven, first of seven, um.
Yeah, if you wanna go that early, and I would also, per our discussion of the weather being a month and a half behind, is that a little bit too early?
Should we move it back a little bit?
Actually, we put it until the nineteenth for it to be published, so.
We have to get it in the publication ready and to put in the paper for next week, yes.
So that'd be the eleventh event of June, is what you're saying, Eric?
Yes, I- I'm just- I just, because everything's pushed back and then just in case the notices aren't sent, you don't wanna put the notice in the paper.
Right.
But, and I believe that you will have. I have every confidence in your office, but-
Well, they're gonna be busy.
June thirteenth.
Anyway, that week, so.
Yeah, that's- that's a bad time, so let's do the eleventh. That'd be fine.
You wanna set-
Or the thirteenth, I'm sorry.
Thirteenth of June.
Coming on Saturday.
Yeah.
Thirteenth of June, sounds like a good time.
So set it for June thirteenth.
At nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock. Well, I'll make that motion. June thirteenth, nine o'clock, public hearing, engineering report, reclassification, all that for DD-103.
All right, we have a motion.
Make sure I write that on the thirteenth.
DD-103 at nine AM on the thirteenth. The motion and the second from Sandy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are good for the thirteenth.
Motion's good. I have one more thing.
All views?
You gotta hurry, Eric.
We said nine o'clock for that, correct? I'm just writing this down. Just an update, a very short update. Another district is, uh, the DD-11, there's been some preliminary work done to, uh, reclassify a branch. It's a- it's a big system, but there's one separate branch off of DD-11 that's never been reclassified. Uh, Colin, our buddy from Jacobson Westergard, is working on that. Uh, there will have to be, we don't have to set it today cause we don't know, but sometime this summer there'll be a hearing on that for the reclassification and then there'll be some, along with that, uh, discussion as far as the clean-out project. That's one of the trees along the bank and all of that.
Oh, that's one where the trees are.
Because that's one of these, you know, these are all historical antique systems, these drainage ditch systems. It's never been- it's its own branch. It's always been that way, but, so they- he's in the approximation of another month for getting the reclassification done. And once that is, then we will schedule a- cause we'll have to have a public hearing for the reclassification. And he said at that time, we'll have a- it can be an informal discussion as far as the project itself. That'll be done potentially this year to clean that out.
Remind me, that is the big group that-
Yes.
You suppose we'd be better off to-
Niagara's old place.
Yeah. Do you suppose we'd be- they have a little drone footage they can show?
We have pictures of it.
That's what I wondered.
Yep, they have pictures. We have- I- we all have pictures, cause I looked at the pictures when I asked them about where we were. What's that?
There's a pile of trees there. Something's been thrown some trees.
They could have all the trees. It's- it's on private property, but what happened was, the way the farm ground is set up, the folks, if I- my directions are right, correct, excuse me if I'm wrong, but on the east, own the section on the west side of the ditch where the trees are and they just never farmed it.
Because of the trees.
Well, the trees grew up because they didn't farm it.
Oh.
And that's how they got there.
It's just a small piece of land.
It's a very small piece of land that they, the folks that farm the ground up, we'll say to the east, also own that spot cause the way that the ditch is and the way that land is sectioned off, of course. And that's how they grew up there. It's a very small area and it wasn't obviously to them worth farming, but it ended up growing up in trees, so anyway, uh, we can have discussion with the project part of it, but the reclassification will have to have a hearing and I think we'll probably hear from Colin. May- you know, probably in the near future as to when he thinks that date can be set. We'll have to set that as well. So anyway, that's- just wanted to let you know I had asked him, came across, and on this 103, he and I actually went out and looked at that here last week at the very- which would technically be the end of it, which is in bode and then around the elevators properties, some options of intakes and so on and so forth. So we'll bring that to everybody's attention at the hearing.
Okay.
Speaking of which, Trish said I was visiting with her the other day and Dawn notified you.
Oh, Rita.
Oh, Dawn Rita.
Yeah, and she was correct, though. They tell the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Because if they would get a call into dispatch center, "Hey, there's some people out in my field," then they would know why.
Well, we have the press here that can say that they have started.
And I mean, I say they're very, uh, good about obviously letting everybody know.
Well, he always tells us he'll let somebody know and he did, so we appreciate that fact.
Yep, so we're good there.
Anything else in drainage?
I just wanted to let you know, speaking of hearings, that'll be something a little ways down the road on that one.
Awesome.
Now you can make the motion. You're not making it?
You might have something else. Come on.
I don't have anything else for right now. I'll make a motion.
Sandy, do you guys wanna do this one? They argue?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to get out of drainage. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are out at, uh, nine thirty-three. Now.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.